Call the general committee board. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, into the Republic, stands one nation under God, visible in justice.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
As a, do we have any more guests on? We have, see Jean's on.
You're merger.
Yes. We have Andy Grace and Matt Meyer from the auditor's office.
So Tom, can you quickly run through the?
Yeah. So the city has determined that it is not practical approved to conduct an in-person city council meeting due to the local state of emergency. So for distancing guidelines, accordingly, this meeting will be held electronically and conducted under Minnesota State Statute, section thirteen D, point zero two one. To the extent practical, members of the public may attend the meeting by utilizing the published link, all in information. Couple items for call. We would like that everybody stay muted until there's a public comment section or you're requested to speak or called upon by the mayor or a public hearing is open. City Council will not be muted. The whole school specifically, and that's me, specifically solicit questions or comments from the public at various points during each item. Please hold questions and comments till requested. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand virtually and I'll go through how to do that. And then staff will individually recognize those wishing to speak on behalf of the mayor. If you're not being recognized, provide obvious visual indicators such as raising your hand or waving at the camera. Your microphone will be remuted after you've spoken. And although it's given the nature of the meeting, you need to be by roll call. So if you're participating on your computer or laptop, at the bottom of your screen, there'll be a section that says participants. If you click on that, it'll open up a sidebar on the right-hand side. You simply need to click raise hand. That will make me aware that you're looking to speak. If you're participating on your handheld device, if you click on more, the three little buttons in the lower right-hand corner, it'll also have a raise hand. Section. And again, if I do miss that you are raising your hand virtually. Given that we have a limited number of people in the audience tonight, just unmute yourself, I think, for tonight. Let me know that you're out there, you want to speak or just make a visual cue. If you're on your phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand and staff will call on individual telephone numbers and ask that you address the council. If you are participating by phone, after the council search for participants online and you wish to speak, the mayor will ask for comments from individuals. So we'll go through people that are working on electronic devices and then we'll specifically ask if anybody on phoneless participate. You should note that on the agenda tonight, we do not have any public hearing or public comment items. That doesn't mean that if you want to address the council under public comment, you cannot do so, we'll provide that opportunity.
Thanks, Tom. Being that there's no changes to the agenda, any?
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion by Timmerman. Second by Novak. Going to roll call, council member seat beside.
Yes.
Nice. Gosh.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote I as well, gentlemen, asses. So on to presentations, proclamations that have audit over two thousand nineteen fiscal year.
So, Mr. Mayor, this evening, we have Andy Grace and Matt Meyer from, from K D, the city's auditing firm. Matt has been with us for a long time, as has been Andy. I'll have them get their backgrounds and overview, but this is primarily a presentation. But do you guys have a presentation that you would like to give or you need to share a screen?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Mayor here with Bergen K D V. Andy will be making the presentation this evening and I want to introduce Andy formally to the council. Andy is new to the council members, but not new to the city. Andy has managed the job of the audit for the last five or six years and knows the city very well. He was recently promoted to shareholder or partner with the firm. And he will be my successor in the years to come here. Andy and I will work together on the audit the next couple of years to make sure it's a smooth transition as I work toward my retirement. But I wanted to introduce Andy here a couple of years ahead of time. So you know him as a familiar face, someone that you can rely on just as you're on the years. And he'll be making the presentation tonight to give you some perspective on the results of the two thousand nineteen fiscal audit. As well as some financial analysis of your general fund and your enterprise funds for the years. I will turn it over to Andy.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council for having me here tonight. Wanted to start off the presentation talking about the responsibilities of us as your auditor. And then also the responsibilities of management in regards to our independent auditors reports. It is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statement. It includes cutting checks, making payroll, processing your utility bills and all, recording all of that financial data onto your general ledger. It's our job to come in and test and examine the information that reports those numbers and ultimately give an opinion on the financial statements. When it comes to that opinion, we are happy to report that we are issuing an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. And what that does is provides that the financial statements barely presented in all material respects. We also issue our report in accordance with government auditing standards. This report talks about our consideration of internal control and we did have two internal control findings to report this year. One being the lack of segregation of accounting duties, a comment that's been present in the past. And then also material audit adjustments. When we make an adjustment to the city's books, that's material, we also have to recognize that as an internal control finding. We also are required to report on the results of our testing of Minnesota. And happy to report that there were no findings to report. We also issue a communications letter that has our required communication and our financial analysis. To start the financial analysis, also wanted to talk about the city council's role in regards to the financial statements and that's establishing the budget. It comes to the general fund budget for two thousand nineteen, city council anticipated two point three million dollars in revenue. Expenditures of two million dollars, transfers out to other funds of one hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars and expected an increase in fund balance of fifty thousand dollars. When it comes to actual results, revenue came at two million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which was eighty thousand dollars more than anticipated. Expenditures came in at just under two million dollars or a hundred and six thousand dollars less than anticipated, which resulted in revenue exceeding expenditures by four hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. Transfers out to capital funds amounted to five hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars to have surplus there and also excess fund balance in excess of the city's minimum fund balance policy. And had a decrease in fund balance in the general fund of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. When it comes, it comes to revenues in the general funds, this next chart shows the makeup of those revenues. And in total, revenues increased a hundred and ten thousand dollars or about five percent. And the majority of the increase here in two thousand nineteen relates to taxes and taxes and assessments, which increased about a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars or seven and a half percent. That was due to an increase in the amount levied in two thousand nineteen. This was offset by a decrease in intergovernmental revenues of a thirty one thousand dollars due to no longer receiving the assistance grants. Remaining categories remain consistent with the prior year. When it comes to the budget for revenues, in total, as we saw earlier, we had a variance here of about eighty thousand dollars or three and a half percent coming in better than anticipated. And most variances were fairly consistent with budgeted amounts, except for licenses and permits had a variance of about thirty thousand dollars over budget due to conservative budgeting. Total expenditures for two thousand nineteen increased forty, forty nine thousand dollars. Public safety expenditures increased seventy three thousand dollars due to some additional salaries and benefits. General government expenditures decreased sixty three thousand dollars to less, less engineering, accounting and consulting fees. And the remaining allocation of these were consistent with the prior year. The general fund budget to actual results for expenditures. There was a total of a hundred and one million nine hundred and thirty two thousand dollars compared to just over a two million dollar budget. So coming in a hundred and six thousand dollars or less than anticipated percent. And the most significant variance again occurred in general government where expenditures were ninety four thousand dollars less than anticipated. Again, related to engineering, accounting and consulting fees being lower than anticipated.
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt, the audio is kind of cutting out a little bit. I'm not sure if there's a microphone.
I'm using the computer audio, so let me do there. Going on to general fund balance, this chart shows the last five years of the general fund balance. General fund balance decreased here in two thousand nineteen, going from just under one point five million to one within three hundred and seventy four thousand dollars, which is a decrease of about a hundred and seven thousand dollars or seven point two percent here in two thousand nineteen. The general fund balance at the end of the year represented seventy one percent of the general fund expenditures for the year. It is the city's policy to maintain fifty percent at a minimum of the operating. Next, we're taking a look at the water fund operating and revenues for the last five years. And in two thousand nineteen, operating revenues, expenses were fairly consistent. Expenses decreased at about five percent and that was due to costs of being lower than the prior year. The overall operations resulted in a operating income here of three hundred and eighty one thousand dollars, which was an increase from the prior year. We also provide this information without depreciation. Depreciation is a non-cash expense on the books. And after factoring that out, there was positive operations of eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Some significant non-operating items occurring in the, in the water fund, special assessments. And ultimately resulted in change in net position, increased position by about a four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. At the end of the year, the water fund had an unrestricted fund balance, unrestricted net position of about seven point one million, with the unrestricted portion being about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Next, we'll take a look at the sewer fund operations for the last five years. Operating revenues and operating expenses were fairly consistent with the prior year, resulting in an operating deficit of two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. In fact, bringing out depreciation had an operating deficit of about seven thousand dollars. This one does have negative cash at the end of the year. Did have a positive total fund balance of five point three million dollars and majority of that is invested in capital assets, net of, net of related debt. And at a negative unrestricted net position at the end of the year. We would recommend that city council continue to monitor this fund to ensure that operations are covering the fund needs. Last, we'll take a look at the storm sewer fund. The past five years here and in two thousand nineteen, operating revenues increased just one point two percent or about fourteen thousand dollars. As expenses decreased just point one percent, fairly consistent with the prior year, resulting in operating from about nine hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. Factoring up depreciation, coming in with a surplus of about a hundred and one thousand dollars. In this fund, there is positive unrestricted net position of three hundred and one thousand dollars. Summary of the two thousand nineteen operating results for the audit and wanted to open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Who has questions? A list written down.
No, I'm still just trying to. No, I, I, as of right now, I do not have.
I don't have any either, so.
Was there anything that the council found surprising in the?
No, I mean, the findings are pretty consistent from what we're finding year to year, just due to the turnout controls and the limited number of staff that we have. Budgetary is, I think, city staff always does a really good job of keeping us, or keeping us within and generally under budget and allowing us to sweep funds to other areas. So there's really no surprises here, so.
And I think the items where you see weaknesses within our finances are no surprise. We talk about them regularly. It's finding reserves, especially in sewer fund in the three eighteen. Then that shows in the financial success.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation and for the audit.
Thank you so much for having us.
See you next year.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
You too.
Thank you, you guys.
Okay, so moving on to public comments, is there anyone on that would like to speak in their public comment? Commissioner Wolf, are you on? I think that is no.
I guess this is not trying to prompt public comment, but would Jean have any public comment of how the Zoom meetings have gone? Any feedback or criticism or anything? And you don't have to answer or want to be put on the spot either if you don't want to.
You're just, you're going to get Jean to not.
I want to hear your. Hope it's not letting me unmute, Jean.
Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been observing these meetings to learn things. I think you guys are doing a great job. I think at times it's probably a thankless job, but overall, considering, I think you're doing a great job. And I'm not running for office. It's too much work. Thank you.
Before you, before you unmute, anything related to this format at all? I mean, would you otherwise be showing up in person if they were, if they were available that way? I'm just curious, you know, how the, how the remote meetings have worked for you and if.
Well, I mean, this is very convenient. The bad thing about your meetings is past my bedtime.
I appreciate it, Jean, thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
See you back, we'll, we'll, we'll talk again. I guess I'm the one that's got a mute.
There you go.
All right. Is there no one else for public count? Go ahead and close that. Move on to consent.
No, no.
No, no.
Is that, is that Tom?
Hi, Tom Wolf, you joining us?
I don't know if you can hear me, I'm, I'm in Minneapolis, I'm at a ballgame or if you can see me, but.
Away and I didn't hear you, so yeah, fire away.
Yeah, hey, just a couple of things, you know, the C D A has it in the budget for, you know, putting in those improvements on two out to thirty five. So we're going to be looking for that. I'm hoping that blood drive is still on. The roundabout is a little bit behind schedule from what the highway department has told me. We're still trying to get a lot of things open there at the county. And, and one big hot issue right now is the Renaissance Festival. The owner came to our board meeting on Tuesday to hopefully get support to open and we all thought that was a good idea. And then we got a couple of emails saying it's a bad idea. So anyhow, we're, it's going to be more of a state health department thing, but you know, it brings a lot of money into the county and employs a lot of people. And so it's, it's nice if that thing can get going, but that's, you know, we'll have to see what the state health department says. But that's, that's all I have unless there's some questions.
Tom, how far behind on, on the roundabout?
I, I thought she said like a week, a couple of days to a week. Lisa told me, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping with this nicer weather here, I'm hoping they can pick things up and get it moving quicker again, so.
We're all with you.
Yeah, I, the sooner the better, right? You know, and the nice thing is that roundabout over in Prior Lake is, is open now and knock on wood. To my knowledge, there has not been an accident there and you know, when they opened that one up in Lakeville by just past Target. I think the first week there was nearly a hundred or something, I don't know, but so it sounds like people have kind of learned and figured them out. So that's a good thing.
We're Scott County, we can handle our roundabouts.
We can, we got it figured out here, so good deal. Hey, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, so on the consent agenda, anyone, any on here they'd like to see old or discuss a little bit more? If not, someone wanted to make a motion. That would be a motion, I know that. Timmerman, Beech, or.
I was trying to be loud enough for you guys to hear me and my internet keeps going in and out.
Don, why don't you go ahead and vote first?
Second, or I, sorry, I.
Kate?
I.
Amanda?
I.
Josh?
I.
Vote I as well, and the consent agenda passes, so. We have no public hearings tonight, we don't have any general business, so move on to reports.
Couple items under administration, one, the usual discussion regarding public meeting format. And I think that really has a big influence by item number four, which is governor's executive order, the mask mandate, if I affectionately refer to it. So we've been continuing in a virtual meeting format for all of our public meetings going forward. I don't think that there's anything at this point that would lead staff to recommend doing differently. However, we have had council provide the opportunity for council members to actually participate from city hall, just because being able to make eye contact makes it easier for meeting flow, et cetera. However, if we're moving with the new executive order, that would mean that if we're all in the same room, effective starting Sunday, we would all have to be wearing masks while we're doing that. Which will create issues, I think, with muffling and hearing. So what I'd like to throw out for the councils, whether or not we need to go back to everybody removing from their own residences or their removal locations, rather than providing the opportunity to come to city hall. I think we have to, just so people can understand us and hear us.
I would agree.
I, I agree with Kate. At first, when this whole thing started, I wanted to get back to normal, but I'm seeing it happening too quick. I agree, I think we.
I'm, I'm glad we did get back to some form of normalcy, but yeah, it's probably the prudent thing to go back to Zoom meetings, so. So Josh, we may never see you again.
That's okay with me.
It's kind of okay with us too. All right.
So the next item is a discussion regarding the reduction of license fees for on-sale liquor licenses renewals. Those are coming up. Linda, our clerk has already sent out notices for that. Renewals basically run from October first through September, excuse me, November first through October thirty first on an annual basis. With the COVID impact and knowing that establishments which often have liquor licenses were some of those that were most impacted by the shutdown. A lot of cities have talked about whether or not they wanted to pro-rate, reduce or eliminate those on-sale liquor license fees for their upcoming renewals. I advised the council in the past that I plan to bring it forward, we're at that point in the process. So really, we're just looking for direction from council. If the council wants to reduce the fees this year in any way, we would simply be amending the current year's fee schedule just for this year. And that would be on consent agenda at the next available council meeting. And we advise the applicants of that intended change in fee structure. There's no magic to this, it's just a question of if this council feels it's appropriate and to what degree and provided information in the packet related to the impact. If the council was to waive the entire on-sale liquor licenses for all businesses that apply to the maximum budget impact would be eighteen thousand dollars. We do budget for contingency and those types of things within, modest contingency within the budget. We're also doing very well relative to the budget so far through the year, so I think we have the capacity to absorb it if the council chose to do so.
I would support bringing them down to zero or as close to zero as possible.
Hundred percent.
Kate, we're not making any motions, so you can.
I, I'm, I'm not going to, just because.
Yeah, in this particular situation, since Kate is an owner of a business's license, she would need to abstain from the full discussion of the vote.
Right on. Josh?
Hundred percent agree with you.
Did we hear from everyone? Did we hear from Don? Awesome.
Yes, I agree to bring it down to zero.
Okay, so we'll have an action item coming forward for, for the council on that item and I'll, I'll let Linda know and she'll prepare.
Perfect, thank you.
Next item is the CARES Act funds update.
I'm sorry, before we do that, being that we're talking about meeting formats, the planning commission meeting on Tuesday. It's a Zoom meeting, is that, or? Okay, so yeah, I guess I remind them we really don't have any need to come to city hall for anything, right?
It's, it's published and I believe Haley did send out appointments to.
Yes, yeah.
The CARES Act funds update, so as the council's aware, the CARES Act was passed by the feds, allocated all three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the city for eligible expenses. As the council knows, at our last council meeting, we approved submitting the certification, make us eligible to receive those funds. We're still waiting for them to finally expect to receive them actually through our council in the next two weeks. Currently, as staff, we're working through the process of identifying potential uses for those funds, out those eligible items we could be reimbursed for. And those expenses that we could make between, you know, between now and November fifteenth, that would be eligible as well. As we're working through that process, there's a couple of things that we are finding. One is we are continuing to build a list of potentially eligible items. We're also finding is that there's very little guidance on what is actually an eligible expense. There, if you recall, it kind of provided these very high level, broad guidance statements, like four bullet points that came down from the feds. Beyond that, there's absolutely zero definitive guidance, even though it's been out there for a month from the state on this issue. So for, just to give you one example, one of the items that you would think would be eligible would be first responder expenses related to the expense. But we, nobody has received any sort of definitive response. Does that just apply to overtime that might have been related to it due to shift changes? Does that apply to just hours that they spend working on COVID response related items? Or does it potentially include just because of the nature of their job, their entire salary and benefits through the eligible timeframe window? And as you can see, depending on the answer that, that has a massive impact on eligible expenses just on that one line item. And as we're working through our list of potential reimbursement and other expenses, we're continuing to ask questions and Mark's taken the lead on that. Regularly participating on discussions and what we're finding is everybody has the exact same questions and there are no answers at this point. So at some point there will be, or we'll just be at a point where we'll have to use our best judgment and go forward and hope that it is eligible. And that we don't have to give money back at some point. So if that's the case, we'll be very, very cautious on how we utilize the dollars. Some of the things that we are talking about currently is would be of course payroll, reimbursement and future payroll through the eligible period for eligible payroll expenses, P P E. We are looking at possible modifications to existing facilities to make them more COVID or contagion proof. And we're in the process of getting potential budget numbers for those types of items. We're looking at business assistance, grants or loans or forgivable loans, but in that area as well. Just the items I listed now potentially exceed the dollars we have, so I expect we'll be coming back to the council. The council will have to make some priority decisions with regards to the use of the funds. My original intent was to, I saw that you raised your hand, Josh. Let me finish up here in a second. We have had requests from our local, one of our local hospitals, that's an eligible, potentially eligible expense to contribute dollars to them, help them recover costs from COVID as well. So the list is long. I was originally intending to come to the council on the August thirteenth meeting. Depending on the timing of when we get answers and the clarity of those answers, we may, we may have to push that meeting. But we're currently. Uh, but we're currently diligently working on that. We do plan to come forward with a list of potential options and recommendations are related to that. Josh, Mr. Mayor, Josh has his hand raised.
Josh, go ahead.
Well, I don't want to steal any thunder joke, because we might have our brains wrapped around the same thing, so I don't know if you want to talk about anything small business-wise or anything, otherwise I will.
Go your way.
No, I mean, I think, and you, you hit on it, Tom, that, you know, you're looking at those different options. I want to not necessarily guarantee slash harden the, the, the ground, draw a line, but I mean, really, I mean, be, um, dedicated to or, uh, trying to make sure a portion of this, whatever that magic portion is, um, really gets pointed towards our small businesses in town, uh, to get creative about that, whether that's twenty-five percent of the fund, ten percent, I mean, just somehow making sure that, um, you know, and, and we can obviously decide the priorities are different things as, as we see that list, uh, in the upcoming meetings, but um, I really think we need to look at the, the businesses that we have here in town and dedicate some portion of this to them um, without hesitation, even if that means we can't recoup some of it from the city level, um. But I don't know what that magic number or percent or breakdown would be. I just feel really strongly about that.
Josh, I had asked, uh, for, I had asked to be kind of kept in the loop on those conversations with, uh, as Renee and Haley were working on it. I suppose you're the EDA chair. I, I, would you want to also be included in those conversations? I'm sure it'll drive staff nuts, but we're fine.
I, I don't necessarily need to be. Uh, I trust, uh, you're going to represent well, and now it's been on the record, too, where I sit, so, um, I think direction has been provided, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay, anything else on that item?
Uh, the last item is the Governor's Executive Order twenty eighty-one, the mask mandate. I just wanted to update the council on what impacts that has to the city, just our day-to-day operations and service delivery. Um, so I'll start with just day-to-day operations. Really, what it's going to mean is some minor changes to how we're handling um, COVID protocols within the office and within the various departments. Um, within City Hall, it simply means that if you're outside of your cubicle or office area in any common spaces, you're going to have to be wearing a mask unless you're in a room by yourself. Um, it means that if you're traveling anywhere in vehicle with somebody else, you're going to need to wear a mask. Um, it means that if somebody comes into your office, or is, if you're in a cubicle area within six feet of you, you'll have to wear your mask. Um, and then, uh, I think that will mean though that we need, quite honestly, have some of our staff looking to work outside the office more than they have been, uh, recently because of the inconveniences associated with that. Uh, the other item for operations for public works, they generally work outside at distances greater than six feet, so that'll have a lesser impact, but the same general rules would apply if they're more than one person in the office space at the same time, they'll need to wear a mask. If there's movement in the vehicle, they'll need to wear masks. But if they're out in the field and they're maintaining more than six feet, they won't need to wear a mask, but if they are in closer proximity, uh, they will. From a police department standpoint, there are some qualifiers or exemptions within the order. They're specific to law enforcement. Generally speaking, um, the same rules would apply, uh, if they're working, uh, when the traffic stops, they're not planning to wear masks, but they may be doing passenger-side approaches, et cetera, to maintain that six foot of distance. They already have protocols when they get handed paperwork, if licenses and things to disinfect after that, but the mask does create an issue for law enforcement, both from a clarity of direction and reading a facial feature is when they're interacting with the public, especially in law enforcement situation. But if they're going into somebody's house or something like that, or they're interacting with the public in close proximity, they would be wearing their masks as well. The other issue that impacts us that's related to this is the order places the burden on businesses to enforce the mask requirement. And then places the burden if the person does not comply for them to call the police department, to have the police department respond and deal with the issue. So I did want to give the council a quick update. Uh, Chief and I have had discussions on how we would handle it at City Hall and how the police department will be handling it generally. So the intent here is not to make an issue or create a point of confrontation. So if we have, we have an individual who comes into City Hall that is not wearing a mask, it will be posted that you do need to wear a mask in City Hall. We will advise them of what the rule is. We will ask them to leave, and if they refuse to do so, we will service them as quickly as possible, advise them of the rule in the future. Now, if you have a repeat offender or somebody that's making an issue, that's a whole different situation. But our goal is not to have our staff become the mask police. Again, we'll advise, we'll request, and we'll service. Um, Brady will be going, the chief will be going around talking to local businesses that have storefronts and having similar conversations with them and basically recommending the same approach with regards to these issues. The order says that you have to make reasonable efforts for compliance as the business. Is our position that reasonable is that you have advised and you have requested? Now, if there's an individual who potentially exists, wants to make an issue out of it, and they do call law enforcement, law enforcement will use their normal opportunities. They will educate, they will request, they will persuade. The last course of action would be any sort of citation, and we're not intending to arrest people because they did not wear a mask. But that's no different, if you think about it, than somebody who's in a place of business that's been asked to leave, that doesn't leave, so they would approach that same type of approach, which is get the person to leave, resolve the issue quickly without confrontation, don't make their thing. But there's always the potential something might happen. So that's how we're approaching, uh, we're going to be approaching it in the coming weeks as the, um, executive order remains in place. Is there any questions about that?
Okay. Um, public works?
None of them.
Nice. Fire Department, assuming there's nothing.
No.
Engineering?
I have no report. I'll answer any questions if I have.
I apologize, it's sounding agenda. Uh, I just can give you a quick update on the progress of the building after.
Rich, I'm sorry, we, I didn't hear you. Oh, all right, thanks, Rich.
I don't think he doesn't have Brady here to give us time to tonight, so he may have his time, too.
Um, Police Department, uh, basically, they are finishing up the underground plumbing. They are planning to start pouring the floors as soon as early, as early as midweek next week. Um, with early the next week, if everything goes smoothly, to start framing in the non-lock walls within the interior. Um, we had a really good meeting today. Everything seems to be moving forward relatively smoothly. The greatest risks in a project are that, are getting the the shell of the plumbing and all the underground and utility work in. Once you get past that, it's fairly straightforward and actually should start picking up pace. Um, right now, the official schedule is that we would be substantially complete and ready for moving first week in November. But obviously, if things continue smoothly, there is the potential that it might be earlier than that, and that timeline will become clearer, of course, for moving into the project. And I'll continue to send, um, interim updates to the council.
Do you think, I mean, since we're in this pandemic situation, I mean, I normally, of course, if we would have some sort of open house for the police department, when it's currently done, we do some sort of like virtual tour or something.
Can we do a ribbon cutting?
We plan on probably doing all of those.
Okay.
Um, Brady, now, I've already had discussions, and this is, we haven't, we have an optimistic view of where the world will be next spring. But after they've fully moved in and settled into the space and the weather's nicer, it would be our intent to hold an open house for the facility, similar to what we did with um, the water treatment facility and any other new facility that we opened up. We've already had some of those conversations on that idea. We talked a little bit about the potential for a virtual tour to give people an idea of, of the facility, but very lightly at this point. And we definitely would be holding a ribbon cutting after they're in and fully settled.
Okay, on the community and development?
There are no specific updates.
Yeah, I don't know if Renee's resigned or anything, so. Marks, we got the, we got the draft of the minutes, and I did see Mark on.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's.
Our head, nothing specific you want me to relate to council?
Okay. So you see, you see.
Nothing. Unfortunately, I was, I've been sick all week, so I did not go to the meeting two days ago.
Uh, other committee board reports, legislative policy committee updates. Has there been any meetings since our last one?
Last couple.
Go ahead, no.
No, go ahead, Amanda.
Uh, this week I attended Metro City's municipal revenue policy committee meeting, uh, which basically just gave an overview of everything that is in that packet or, you know, proposed. Um, I did just read tonight, send it to Tom, just to give a look at, to see if there's things that I should focus in on more than others. Um, the other, the, the municipal cities revenue policy committee was last week, and I was not able to so those are the two that I'm participating in.
Yeah, the two, I, I was able to attend two out of the three, um, I can't remember what they're called, um, but mostly focused on economic development and housing stuff. As everybody probably knows, COVID was a big discussion in all of them, plus, uh, uh, affordable housing, another hot topic, the Batsy stuff, and getting more aggressive, uh, and, uh, kind of beating them to the punch moving forward, so looking at policies or just legislative initiatives, uh, regarding that. Um, yeah, and it's the first meeting, so it's the overview, selecting the speakers. We had Mindot, we had Deed, we, I mean, we actually had a few speakers at them, so that was kind of good. Um, but I'll forward some of the stuff as things get kind of formulated. They did create, uh, a diversity and equity subgroup, subcommittee or whatever, that I volunteered to be included in. Um, and then there was some talk, or is, uh, one of the task forces of one of the groups, um, that I'm not on, um, but I weighed in on, of course. Um, they are moving forward some language changes for potentially changing, uh, remote meetings and allowing for more flexibility with that, so uh, I didn't put our city's name as in support of that, but I said personally, uh, I would love to learn more, and now that they're moving forward, I'll shoot it over to Tom to send to you guys to see if we have an official stance on it.
Okay. Next is scale, or is, scale is canceled and, or not scanc, just not scheduled from July, so no updates on my end for that or executive, I'm assuming the other two are the same, right?
Yeah, the, we did hold the, um, Service Delivery Committee meeting.
Did.
Yeah, most of the discussion was really, uh, circled around what people were going to be doing with their CARES Act funding and utilizing it. Um, all cities, to one degree or another, are carving out proportion for some sort of business subsidy eligible loan or grant program. Uh, there are variances, and cities are at varying points in that process from just getting going and deciding what the dollar amount is to already implementing them. So, uh, we're not outside the curve, but we're probably in the latter half of that process relative to other cities. And to be blunt, it generally goes, the cities that are larger and have existing programs or have more staff are further down, further in the process than we are.
Sure.
Um, other items is talking about potential eligible expenses. Everybody's in the same, both, they're trying to identify what's eligible, um, what's the most beneficial use for those dollars, um, for their organizations. And across the board, there's commitments to just basically share the list of this is what we're planning to use it on, so if anybody has a really good idea or template that somebody else can use, they can be shared in typical scale fashion.
Okay. MDTA?
Meeting is next week.
I thirty-five.
Uh, meeting was a couple of weeks ago. I already updated the last meeting.
Okay. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, and I'm getting together with the Chamber President tomorrow morning, um, but I don't have any update, Kate, there's a change, no. Okay. On to discussion by council.
I do have one item I'd like to talk about, and just run it by everybody's, uh, brains and see if we can bring it back up again. We've talked about it in the past. Um, possibly going from an EDA to an EDC. I just kind of want to see how other people are thinking and feeling about changing our format, changing, um, and, and making it more community-driven.
It's going to shock you, Kate. I'm a big fan of that. I've only been harping on it for years. Uh, no, I, I mean, I think we should. I, I don't know. I mean, we just did our vision and goals and planning stuff. I don't know if there's a way to add that in there or to incorporate that in to what we're looking at for future work sessions and how that would look.
Can you give the roughie of the whole background?
So, okay, so the, right now, our EDA, which, you know, I think we maybe have, have had one EDA meeting in the past, what, two years, something like, I mean, this feels like, uh, and our economic development authority is all the same people that are on City Council. Um, reasons we haven't been having meetings or doing much, it's just, there's lots of other things to do, and we're kind of talking about some, some of the stuff you may talk about most meetings, uh, at council meetings. Um, and EDC is a little different, whereas an EDA has a thor, has taxing authority, EDC doesn't. Um, and it's really more of a recommendation body, uh, to the city, the city council, and I've always liked that idea, because you're bringing in people from, that are not necessarily directly involved in government. Potentially don't have to even live within the city. They can just work or have a business in the city. But, you know, you talk to, and I'm just speaking with me, speaking personally, but, you know, I'll talk to people from other cities or other EDC members at, in other places, and I've been part of an EDC at Lakeville, and you get a lot, you, you can get a lot of good ideas going, uh, that, I don't know, I think there's just a lot of benefit to having different people in the room, um, that are not necessarily part of government, but just part of the pure business community. Um, they can help raise issues for mental development or have, or suggested ideas. Maybe at the very mo, at the very least, there are people that are well-known business people outside or are going outside and actively promoting output market, but, but, meaning, so I've always been a big fan of it. Um, I know the, and the reasons we haven't pursued that any further is just kind of a resource deal. Um, we have Haley and Renee, and I know it's, they've expressed concern about having the resources to be able to do that. Tom, did you add anything?
No, I do want to clarify the EDA, EDC a little bit.
Go ahead.
So any economic development authority has certain powers, uh, within statute to be able to let me issue debt and, uh, other authorities. We originally established the EDA simply to add tools to the toolbox. Um, and the intent was consciously not to add any of the bureaucracy, so we could be more responsive to economic development issues that would come up. So, for example, we've got a big user at I thirty-five, and we need to go through a process. We don't need to go through an EDC or another organization, another level for being responsive to that. Um, and then the idea was that, at the time, uh, we don't have the resources to support a whole other commission, and it would still have to come to the council. So it was really, we're just adding tools to the toolbox. We're going to make the council, we do want some feedback from the local business community, so we will appoint somebody that's recommended by the chamber to kind of provide that additional voice. So it was kind of the minimalist approach to how you do it. An EDC is an actual commission. Now, the council can assign EDA authorities to that EDC, or they can simply leave it as an advisory body. So what powers and authorities you give it, and how it's structured, um, are, are, are up to discussion and what the council would like to do. Now, from a staffing standpoint, that has been the ongoing issue, and so issue, if you create a commission, you got to resource it, otherwise you're wasting people's time and energy, and it's been staff's feedback and system, you that. We're stretched right now from a resource standpoint. We simply don't have the resources to staff a whole other commission. And because it's not just scheduling a meeting, but they're going to want to do things, and you know who does those things, it's staff. And so it's a question of do we have the resources to do it? So it's a little bit of juice worth, is the juice worth the squeeze, and do you even have the resources to do it? And so staff has been really conscious now. We'll do anything the council asks us to do. And do you even have the resources to do it? And so staff has been really conscious now. We'll do anything the council asks us to do. But if you ask us our opinion, our feedback has been that we're not resourced for it. And then the end result of that is going to be that the juice isn't worth the squeeze. Not the concept, that definitely has benefit. I have established, developed and worked with the EDCs and other communities. But if we don't properly resource it, it's going to be ineffectual and it won't be a success. So that's been the limiting factor, primary limiting factor.
So if this is something that, as a council, we decided we would want to do, I think it'd be realistic to try and I don't know, I, I mean.
Is there a way that we can just have it maybe on a work session one day where we can just brainstorm ideas that maybe if we do an EDC, the commissioner that's in charge, chairman of the EDC actually puts together the agenda, does?
No, I can tell you, I would be blunt and straight out, it will not function well and will not be effective. You will need professional staff pulling it together. Otherwise, at that point, you're talking, what it essentially becomes is a, and there won't be communications between staff and that organization. It will simply become just the downtown business club or something like that from an effectiveness standpoint. If you're going to do it, you want to do it right, which means we're going to need additional resources, which we'd be happy to talk about.
And, and that was where I was going, you know, I, I, looks, I'd love to start having, I know we did a while back have a conversation, but I'd love to revisit that conversation. Um, you know, I, I, I wasn't at Lakeville EDC for a long time. I had resigned when I took office here, but you know, a lot of the, the people that were in that room were big business, were, were big hitters in the business community and brought perspectives that I wouldn't ordinarily have thought. It was a good learning tool. Um, you know, Lakeville, one example, I mean, Lakeville's done, had a lot of construction projects going on. Uh, the EDC pushed really hard on different ways of communicating and working with those businesses. And that's just, that, that's something that's just kind of been in my mind was we had this roundabout project going on. And that's not to say staff hasn't done it. Oh, right, staff hasn't tried to do it, but like you said, staffs have just limited resources. Um, I don't know, I think it's good and I, Kate brought it up and I'm doing all the talking here, but I'm a big fan.
I, I would just like to revisit it. I would like to talk logistically. I would love to know what the other council members think. I mean, I, obviously Joe is very passionate about it. I would like to, to revisit it and see if there's what we can do. Um, I think the input from other business um owners or people in development, you know, would be great for another perspective, but I think we also have to talk about logistics and realistically, if it's something that we can do or not, and how the rest of the council feels, so.
I am all for it, you guys. So Kate and Joe, I agree with both you guys. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Amanda, if you were going to start talking.
I was going to ask, how does the rest of the council feel? So, I mean, it was great.
I guess, I think I'll kind of just back to the point Josh made, the work session, then we need to start building out that staff and considering that in the budget for twenty twenty-one.
It's a properly resource.
Yeah, it could be a properly resource and, you know, do it the right way.
Right.
I don't know if that would be considered, like when you're saying that you can assign EDA authority, is that how?
My recommendation, quite honestly, is I would not move any financial authorities to live here doing things away from the council. I would keep it strictly an advisory body.
And so just, it would essentially be adding a third commission that would revise.
Yep.
And I think that, given the growth that we need to happen down here, having those outside bodies makes sense because we don't know everything. So it makes sense to me.
So you're open to just at least kind of talk more logistically, what we would have to do now?
Josh, are you, you just, are you meaning opposed to all of this?
Well, I could be the pain in the butt. Um, and it's fun to always do that, but I, I mean, I, I mean, I think it's, it, it is completely off the table unless we resource it. Um, a hundred percent. I mean, and I think, and, and so it gets down to is, is it worth it? Um, and, and as we add a new person, I mean, we're already looking at twenty twenty-two before, uh, unless we, you know, do anything different with the budget to do anything, so. I mean, we have time to plan it out, time to think about it, but um, I, I don't know, I just.
But Josh, are you open to having the conversation?
Absolutely open to have the conversation.
That's all I was really looking.
Yeah.
All I wanted to do was help the, open up the conversation. So it's, it's simple enough. We can just schedule um a report item discussion on the future council agenda. We already have a memo on the topic that would just maybe be revisited and updated um to provide background on the topic for purposes of the council discussion. And we're talking about um future budget years, again, providing that background, having that discussion would inform a discussion when we're talking about presented budgets, so, perfect.
And that's all I wanted, just to revisit it. I know we've talked about it in the past, but I.
Kate, thank you for bringing that up.
Well. Hey, Joe.
Something I'm very, I am very passionate about.
I think for that, that discussion and that work session, just uh, and, and I can't remember what was in the previous memos or not, but uh other cities, other, other, just to get a glimpse of what it could look like, where it's been successful, where it's flopped, um, uh, and just.
Tell you right now, as one is going to tell you, it's been highly successful. Cities don't like it, maybe fault on that, so I just, I'm just telling you.
Well, but maybe there's ways to define that more like where some examples.
We can talk to some of the guys from the EDCs.
Be able to get informal feedback that is maybe a more accurate, um, so that's kind of like the big things, quite honestly, getting a better understanding of what the resources are going to be. So what are you doing with the resources you have allocated to it? I do know from personal experience that the upfront resources required for commissioners are dramatic. It's, it's that initial investment of time and everything to get it up because you have to establish it. It can take six to eighteen months for your commission to develop an understanding of what their job really is and start to be able to get their arms around what they're doing and reaching consensus, because everybody has this big pile of ideas and you have to build it up. It's just a process. And that tends to be fairly resource-intensive compared to what it is once it's up and running and it's an established commission and it kind of has a feeling of what its role is. It really has its mission and its goals annually, then it becomes a little more efficient. And so we want to have this discussion with the communities if we can on both of those, get a better idea of what it might take for purposes of this discussion. So that would be an added dimension we had in the past. I think that the council is looking for beyond just, here's what it is and do we want to do it? But maybe start that discussion, start having an idea of what the resources require, realistically what the resources might be to make something like that now.
I'd be interested, yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion by council? Anyone interested in adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
The second might know that. I'll vote aye. Amanda?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
All right, we need to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.